Good evening. Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our January meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to those minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes as submitted stand adopted upon unanimous consent. Mary Ferry, Chair of District Five.
Good evening. Is this thing on? Can you hear me? In 1995, District Five asked you to thank Emmett H. Eaton for his 39 years of service to RTM.
Mrs. Ferry, I'm going to look at it right now.
Okay.
All right, while we are waiting for that, let me welcome everyone to the March Meeting of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM Moderator. The organization of our call tonight is that we will combine seven of our proposed appointments. Those will be Items One, Two, Four, Five, Six, Eight, and Nine. And then we will take those combined items up first, and we will then consider separately Items Three, Seven, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, and Fourteen. I also understand, we did approve those minutes for the January meeting. There was, apparently Mr. Clark pointed out that there was a paragraph, I think, missing from -- no?
No, it's correct that she's the Chairman of District Five.
All right, thank you. So apparently, I'll, I think we're all set with that, Mr. Clark.
Is this working? No.
Are we working on that microphone? Sounds good. Go ahead, I think I heard it.
Is it working?
Can you pull it closer?
It doesn't come any closer.
All right, just speak, we've been --
In 1995, District Five asked you to thank Emmett H. Eaton for his 39 years of service to RTM. Tonight, we will ask you to say a final goodbye. Whereas Emmett Eaton led a long and distinguished life of service to his country and the town of Greenwich, during World War II, Mr. Eaton served as a transport commander aboard Army and Army transports crossing between the United States and Europe. He was a liaison officer at the War Production Board in Washington, D.C. During his time on the RTM, Mr. Eaton served on the Budget Overview Committee, Finance, Planning and Zoning, Fire, and Police Committees. He was Vice Chairman and Chairman of the Town Officers Committee. He also served on the Building Committees for the Newtown Hall and the Cos Cob School. In addition, Mr. Eaton was active with the Riverside Association and the Rotary Club. A lifelong sailor, he was Commodore of the Old Greenwich Yacht Club and was a member of the Corinthians Sailing Organization for over 50 years. He was co-chairman of the Tall Ships Celebration on Long Island Sound in 1976 and 1986. Mr. Eaton served on the Parish Council of St. Catherine of Siena Church. Later in his life, Mr. Eaton enjoyed performing with the Retired Men's Association singing group, The Melody Men. He also pursued his love of painting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Representative Town Meeting join District Five in honoring Emmett Eaton's life, and that a suitable copy of these minutes be presented to his family, including his wife of 59 years, Mary Ann Paige Eaton, and his daughters Beth Eaton Koch and Eileen Marie Bemis and their families.
Thank you. Will the members please rise and join me in a moment of silence in honor of Emmett Eaton? Thank you. Gordon Ennis, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, as you recall, last December, we authorized a sense of meeting resolution requesting the Finance Committee to look into the leases granted by the town. We formed a subcommittee to do that. The co-chairs of that committee are Rob Pirelli Minetti from District 12 and Jill Oberlander from District Two. I want to thank both of them for the, an excellent job so far. I also want to thank the other members, Mary Ferry from District Five, Eric Norgard from District Six, Irv Porter from District Six, Karen Satikon from District Six, Lucia Jensen from District Seven, and me, of course. Together, we've reviewed approximately 22 leases, with each member contributing many hours of work. I also want to thank the town employees who have made themselves available to provide documents and answer questions, and a special thanks to Peter Menarsky, whose help has been invaluable. As part of our review, we have excerpted the main lease components, for example, term, responsibility for maintenance and repairs, allocation of costs. We recommend that this kind of analysis be standard for the review performed on every lease when it's presented to the RTM. Our work, however, is not complete. As a matter of fact, it was just a week and a half ago, we uncovered another lease. So they continue to percolate to the surface, and as they do, we track them down. Now we're beginning to go back to the town departments to audit compliance and those kinds of things, after having reviewed the documents themselves. We're also working to clear up some questions about specific lease documents and arrangements with the nonprofits. And we're looking at how the town handles leases of property nonprofit entities to try and find and understand the complex, the complete complex of town lease properties. We will report to the RTM in the next couple of months with conclusions of our review and recommendations for action. Some preliminary observations, however, can be shared with you tonight. First, there is no, there is a lack of uniformity in the lease documents. They are almost entirely discreet. There's a lack of coherence in the administration of the leases. There's no single person or department in Town Hall assigned as a responsible entity for lease administration, such as billing costs, receipt of annual reports, notice, and so on. As a matter of fact, one lease has the tenant reporting to six or seven different entities within the Town Hall. So there's no, we've also found that there's no consistent or unified town policy that is followed either with respect to the award of a lease or in the terms contained in the lease. We think that leases should be negotiated with an eye to the future. For example, what seems like a good idea in 2011 may not be such a good idea 10 years from now. Excuse me. And finally, we have abstracted all of these leases, and one of our recommendations will be that, that an abstract accompany the lease every time one is presented to the RTM. I will be available to answer any questions later on, so will members of the committee if you have any interest in the subject. Otherwise, you can look forward to a written report the next time we get together, or certainly by June if the budget interrupts that progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a note about our arrangement within the auditorium here. Our largest district is District Eight, Cos Cob, which sits in the middle section in the back. And I understand that some of our guests tonight have been sitting in that section. So if I could invite non-RTM members to allow the members of that district an opportunity to sit together, we do have, I see seating in the back of the section on my far right as you walk in, and there are some open seats in the back. So I'd ask that you please assist us in allowing the members to sit in their section. All right. Steve Anderson, Chair of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Education would like to extend an invitation. Nine days from now, Wednesday, March 23rd, 7:00 PM, we are doing an educational forum on MESA. We're actually holding it at the GHS Auditorium, and there will be a presentation running you through the structure, the costs, the needs of the facility. Obviously, there are very, a couple of very key votes coming up within the BET and then possibly to the RTM. There have been, and there will be, a number of opinions expressed about this project. Our goal is to make sure that everybody is dealing from the same set of facts, and we feel that having this forum next Wednesday will be a great chance for you to come in, listen, actually get up and tour the facility afterwards. So we're inviting all BET members and RTM members to come forward to this meeting next Wednesday, the 23rd. We are looking for as many people as we can to show up for this, so that if it does come to the RTM for a vote, you're going to be in position to make a very learned vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. What time, I think? 7:00 PM. All right. We all know that an item that is likely to garner quite a bit of discussion tonight is Item Three, and in preparation for that debate, there are sign-up sheets that have been left on the table outside the hall, and there are sign-up sheets at the front here. So I encourage anyone interested in speaking on Item Three, which is the appointment of Mr. Delavati to the Board of Parks and Recreation, to please put your name on that list. I'd also like to remind all of the RTM leadership that there will be a meeting of the Moderators' Committee, primarily for the Chairman of our districts and committees, but all officers are invited, and anyone else who is interested may attend. That meeting will take place on Wednesday of this week at 8:00 PM in the Cone Room at Town Hall. There will be an agenda circulated after the meeting by email, and I urge you to be prompt. The first item and the main item of discussion will be a discussion with the Chair of the BET, who will be with us to talk about Project Renew for Nathaniel Witherell. But there are other items on that agenda. All right. That brings us now to the call for tonight's meeting. As I mentioned earlier, I did inform our district and committee chairs that based on the reports we received, it is my recommendation that we suspend the rules to combine seven items for voting purposes. Those are Items One, Two, Four, Five, Six, Eight, and Nine, which would leave to consider separately Items Three, Seven, Ten through Fourteen. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to combine Items One, Two, Four, Five, Six, Eight, and Nine for voting purposes? All right. The motion to suspend the rules is now before us. It requires a two-thirds majority and is not debatable. All those in favor of suspending the rules and combining Items One, Two, Four, Five, Six, Eight, and Nine for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion has carried. And as I said, we will take those items up first, and then Item Three would be the first of the separate items to come before us. So may we, actually, Item Number One was postponed from our January meeting, so that is now before us. That is a resolution appointing Robert Siska to be a member of the Board of Ethics for a term expiring March 31, 2014. May we have the reports on that item? Mr. Von Kaiseling, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I wanted to thank, first of all, since this is the beginning of our nominations, thank my committee for coming through a long, hard session of many, many meetings, five, six, about every other week we were meeting since Christmas, to keep up with our selectmen. And I'm happy to say that by and large, they were able to get all their nominations in before the expiration of the terms, which is a, some kind of a record. So I wanted to thank both of them for a lot of hard work. Robert Siska, we saw back in January 5th, before the January meeting, and we voted for him 12-0-0. It is a renomination. He, if you remember, he is a, on the Board of Ethics, he's talking about the whistleblower hotline that's been established for people, and the interest in getting the case studies available, published and available. Since the Board of Ethics does a lot of opinions for town officers like ourselves, it's important for us to be able to have those available to go back and research on various situations. They have managed to put those all together, and they're ready to publish it. They just need a little money from some office to get it published. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Evan Dellman, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
We met Tuesday night with the applicant. It's a reappointment of an excellent candidate. We voted 11-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on Item One. Item Two now comes before us. David Teis, our Selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Be it resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be reappointed to a regular, as a regular member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring March 31, 2015, Scott R. Johnson.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item Two has been moved and seconded. Mr. Von Kaiseling, that plan is not going as --
Yeah, I know. It's much, all the best lead plans. Mr. Scott Johnson, we interviewed on the 22nd. We voted for him 11-0-0. It is a renomination. He is one of the longest-serving members of that board and has a very wide corporate memory. Thank you.
Karen Satikon, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM. This is the nominee's, actually, fifth nomination to the Board of Parks and Recreation. Scott is a lawyer who specializes in real estate law. I would refer to Scott as the Renaissance man of the Board of Parks and Rec. His knowledge is vast, as he has served in multiple areas of the Board's work. We interviewed him for about 30 minutes last Tuesday. It was really more of a discussion and could have gone on much longer. We interviewed him on subjects from new waterways management plan, to conservation, to facility needs, like the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center and the skating rink, and the plan for the Cos Cob Power Plant. He currently also serves on the POCD Town Properties Committee, Turf Review Committee, Field and User Group, Marine and Beach Facilities, and the Park Master Plan. The Board is indeed fortunate to have Scott continuing to serve on it. The vote was 12-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item Two. Item Four now comes before us. David Teis with that resolution.
Once again, good evening, everyone. Be it resolved that the following named person nominated to the Board of, by the Board of Selectmen, be appointed a regular member of the Board of Social Services for a term expiring March 31, 2014, Abbott Jones.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item Four has been moved and seconded. Dr. Karen Foseliotis with the report of our Health and Human Services Committee.
The Health and Human Services Committee met with Abbott Jones, who was a nominee for the Board of Social Services. Mr. Jones is a 42-year resident of Greenwich and is currently retired. Prior to his retirement, he was a founding partner of Ad Media Partners, and before that, he was President and Chief Operating Officer of Foot, Cone, and Belding Communications, then one of the largest advertising agencies in the world. He also worked with Olivia Mather, where he was a Senior Vice President and Director. Mr. Abbott became involved in River House, the Greenwich Adult Daycare, and it was there that the needs of the elderly in our town became known to him, especially housing needs for adults with mental health issues. He subsequently spoke to the Selectmen about volunteer opportunities on boards and commissions, and when a position in the Board of Social Services came up, he was hooked. He felt that based on his position on the Board of River House and his prior work in advertising, he could enhance the Board of Social Services. One of our committee members, who was employed by the town and the Department of Social Services, commented about the need for better publicity for social services, and stated that he was looking forward to Mr. Abbott's contribution. Mr. Abbott was then asked what appealed to him about social services, and he responded that the first thing that appealed to him was the breadth of activities that social services is involved in. For example, he was unaware that there were camp, there were camp activities offered to children with needs, and did not know of the homemaker services offered by the department. He was also surprised and pleased to learn about the exceptional level of care that has been provided by the town for over 100 years. Compared to other towns, Greenwich, he feels, is doing a better job at providing these services. The budget of the department, he noted, is approximately $3 million, which equates to about $50 per taxpayer in Greenwich. Most committee members expressed that they felt that Mr. Abbott's skill in communication and advertising will be an asset to the Board of Social Services, especially in public meetings, where he can assure that questions are answered directly and concisely. The Health and Human Services Committee voted 11-0-0 to recommend his appointment to the full body of the RTM. District One was absent.
Thank you. Mr. Von Kaiseling with the Appointments Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We interviewed, excuse me, on February 22nd of this year, we interviewed Mr. Jones, Social Services. It's been pretty well covered by my fellow chair. I would just say that his experience in River House, the adult daycare, really opened his eyes to the adult and senior population needs, particularly, which is, everyone knows is a growing population in town, particularly of interest to social services. We voted for him 11-0-0. District 11 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on Item Four. Item Five now comes before us. Peter Tessie, First Selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Board of Social Services for a term expiring 3/31/12, Angelica M. Arenas.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item Five has been moved and seconded. Dr. Foseliotis with the Health and Human Services report.
The committee met with Angelica M. Arenas, who's a nominee for the Board of Social Services. Ms. Arenas came to Greenwich in 1992, when she was enrolled as a freshman at Greenwich High School. She is currently employed as a claim billing analyst at Greenwich Hospital. Ms. Arenas was once a client of Social Services. She was helped in her moments of crisis and received services from Social Services. Through their program and a lot of parental support, she became self-sufficient. A single parent with two children, she volunteered within the town and then discovered that her passion is still social services. As a former client, she is aware of the various programs that involve children and families. Ms. Arenas was asked whether she would separate, whether she could separate her personal experience from the governance role that a board member must exhibit. She stated that because she knows about the program, she also knows how these programs might be improved and also be cost-effective, and would, and how they could also provide better services to the community. Her experiences would offer a different perspective, she felt, that would also improve the department. Ms. Arenas was also asked whether, as a single parent, she would have the time to commit to evening board meetings and other activities that were demanded of a board member. She replied that as a single mother, she understands that sleep is not an option. Once she commits to something, she is committed. She also states that she has a strong family support system. For example, her father is retired and picks up her son from school, and her parents are always available for babysitting duties. In response to a question about what the greatest need was for parents with children who had difficulty in school or problems with the law, she stated emphatically that they need training in parenting. She noted that she comes from a traditional family, and what her parents said, and still say, especially her father, goes. She said that is missing from a lot of families today, and that the key to breaking that mole is parental training. Health and Human Services voted 11-0-0 to recommend her appointment to the full body of the RTM. District One was absent. I should also add that Ms. Arenas is only in her 30s, and we feel she'll be a breath of fresh air to the Social Services Department.
Thank you. Mr. Von Kaiseling with the Appointments Committee report.
Having seen hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of candidates and nominees, I can tell you that Ms. Arenas is one of those special and exceptional people that really gives, makes this job a pleasure. We interviewed Ms. Arenas on February 22nd. As just mentioned, she's grown up in Greenwich, graduating from Greenwich High School. She followed this with an impressive array of educational endeavors in medical, insurance, accounting fields. At present, she is in charge of the billing operations of Greenwich Hospital. While living in the Housing Authority residences, she is raising her young daughter, participating in PTA, parent leadership training, community health fairs, and also civilian and police programs in the eastern sector, the CAP programs. Ms. Arenas' experience and familiarity with the client population of the Board of Social Services, and her mastery of the Spanish language, and her superb professional skills recommend her for this appointment. We voted for 11-0-0. District 11 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on Item Five. Item Six now comes before us. Once again, First Selectman, Peter Tessie.
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring 3/31/14, Anella Ramcharandes.
Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item Six has been moved and seconded. Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members. The Land Use Committee met with Mr. Ramcharandes last Monday evening. He's being appointed as an alternate to the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. He's a retired senior executive of Xerox Corporation with degrees in mechanical engineering, industrial engineering, and an MBA from Columbia University. He's volunteered for assignments at the Housing Authority of Stanford. He serves on the Board of the Southwestern Urban League and the Executive Committee of the World Affairs Forum of Fairfield and Westchester Counties. A Greenwich resident of 30 years, he wants to give back to Greenwich, and he's willing to study as an alternate to learn about planning and, about planning and zoning in the town. Our questions to Mr. Ramcharandes centered around what constitutes a hardship worthy of granting a variance. Our vote on Mr. Ramcharandes was 11 in favor, zero opposed, one abstention.
Thank you. Mr. Von Kaiseling.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. We interviewed Mr. Ramcharandes on February 22nd also. As mentioned, I think my colleague has covered pretty well the whole report on that. We voted for him, nine in favor, none opposed, two abstentions. District Five and 10 abstaining, and District 11 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on Item Six. Item Eight now comes before us. Drew Marzullo, Selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the body. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring 3/31/14, Michael Borkowski.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item Eight has been moved and seconded. Peter Berg with the Land Use Committee report.
Thank you. So the Land Use Committee met with Michael Borkowski last Monday night. Again, he's being appointed as an alternate to the, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. He has a background in mechanical engineering from Cooper Union, but his actual degree, his actual career was spent in firms like Bristol Myers, Cheeseboro Ponds, BBDO, advertising. Again, he was also a senior executive. Again, he was also a senior executive. He's a trustee of Cooper Union and wants to give back to the community. He was questioned about the fact that his wife is a realtor in town. There was some discussion about an action that Cooper Union was involved in in the city, a land use matter having to do with Cooper Union's desire to expand its campus. But we were satisfied with his answers on these. He was asked about some various land use issues in town, one involving Greenwich Academy. He said if there were any questions, he would recuse himself on cases. He favors giving more incentives for open space protection in town. He opposed a developer who clear-cut his neighboring lot. Our vote on Michael Borkowski was eleven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention.
Thank you. Mr. Von Kaiseling with the Appointments Committee report.
Thank you, sir. We interviewed Michael Borkowski as a new nomination as alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We interviewed him on March first of this year. Everything's been covered well. We also talked about the Cooper Union experience as a trustee. He's a trustee of Cooper Union, and we felt that that was very useful because he had been involved in a number of the projects and gave him tremendous experience in the New York City permit process and zoning and regulation, which is exactly the kind of experience we'd like to have when it comes to this side of the table in Greenwich. So we voted for him, twelve zero zero.
Thank you. Discussion on item eight. The seventh and final combined item now comes before us. Mr. Marzullo.
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be nominated, be appointed an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring three thirty-one fourteen, Nancy N. Raymer.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item nine has been moved and seconded. Peter Berg with the report on this item.
Thank you. And as with the other candidates, we met with Mrs. Nancy Raymer last Monday night. She is being appointed as an alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission. She's a resident of Riverside since nineteen seventy-four. She is a articulate attorney with extensive background in family law and divorces. She walked her children to school, keeps her boat at the town marina, walks and bikes at Greenwich Point on Sunday mornings, values a simple life versus shopping, and she is transitioning to retirement. She has no background in planning and zoning, but has had dealings with property matters in town as a family lawyer, and her husband is involved in real estate law. She has read our Plan of Conservation and Development, but she said she has much to learn. She was questioned about the recent sale of their business property on Benedict Place to the Trampfows, who have proposed a development. She is simply now a tenant of the Trampfo. So she said she would recuse herself of that matter ever came before Planning and Zoning Commission. Our vote on Nancy Raymer was twelve in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. And before calling for the final report, I just remind everyone, this is the last of the combined items. We will take a vote on this after we hear the report and then proceed to item three. So anyone interested in speaking on item three, the appointment of Mr. Delabati to Board of Parks and Rec, please put your name on those lists, and if I could ask someone shortly to bring those forward. Mr. Von Kaiseling.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ms. Nancy Raymer, Ms. Nancy Raymer, is the better half of Mr. Mrs. Raymer. Mr. Raymer's on the BET. We know him well from Board of Ethics, et cetera. Ms. Raymer was interviewed by us on March the first. Ms. Raymer's a practiced family law since nineteen seventy-four. She has no zoning practice in her legal business. As I mentioned, she's trying to retire and give back to the community. She disclosed that her husband, Jeffrey Raymer, does some practice in real estate law, but there is no communication between the two practices, and is also considered by the committee -- it was also considered by the committee and incumbent P&amp;Z Commission members present that Mr. Raymer appeared infrequently, if at all, before the commission. Ms. Raymer declared that she would not apply the most stringent legal conflict of interest rules -- excuse me, she would apply the most stringent rules, and recused herself whenever needed. The question of Trampfow came up. She has read the Plan of Conservation Development, which gives her some kind of an award, I think, and believes that the regulations need to be kept ahead of the curve. She's prized the residential atmosphere and local small business shopping in the local villages. We voted for her, eleven in favor, none opposed, one abstention. The abstention was district one, who abstained on all planning and zoning nominations, with the exception of Mr. Borkowski.
Thank you. Discussion on item nine. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Combined items one, two, four, five, six, eight, and nine, and proceed to poll your delegation. While we are voting, we will continue with the business of the meeting. I ask at this point if someone would be kind enough to bring the sign-up sheets forward. Yes, before I call for the resolution on item three, Bob Tuthill, District four.
I move to limit debate on item three.
All right, Mr. Tuthill has moved to limit debate on item three. The limitations being three minutes per person per motion on this item. Is that correct, Mr. Tuthill? Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded to limit debate on item three, to three minutes per person per motion. Motion to limit debate is not itself debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of Mr. Tuthill's motion to limit debate, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion has carried. So all speakers are now on notice that there is a three-minute limit in effect for this item. I'll now ask for the resolution on item number three. Drew Marzullo, our selectman.
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Board of Park and Recreation for a term expiring three thirty-one fifteen, Gary Delabati.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item three has been moved and seconded. May we hear the committee reports on this item? Beginning with the -- Mr. Von Kaiseling, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We met with Mr. Delabati on February eighth. It's a long time ago, at the beginning of all this. We interviewed Mr. Delabati on the eighth. He lives in North Myannis, part of Riverside, for seventeen years, where he settled there to raise his family of wife and two teenage sons. Mr. Delabati has become a respected member of the town league coaching staff for Greenwich Youth Football League and baseball over the last ten years. He has also been very active in the North Myannis School fundraising and powwow carnival, which many of you enjoy. Mr. Delabati has been a major board member and participant in a Life Beat, which is a foundation in the music industry's AIDS Foundation. Among many accomplishments here, he created a cupcake with our local Crumbs Bakery shop and sold nationally for a dollar each, proceeds of which go to Life Beat. He's also uses his celebrity status to win money on TV game shows for that same foundation. He estimated that he's raised about five hundred thousand, I think, dollars or so of his own, on his own business. Besides his coaching activities, Mr. Delabati has particularly appreciated the town's parks and reserves, where he and his sons have enjoyed hiking and nature visits and the trails. Mr. Delabati's mother resides in a local care home, and he enjoys outings with her in Byron Park when it's possible for her to do that with him. Your Appointments Committee was concerned that the nominee would have a balanced value for active and passive park uses. I'm sure we'll hear more about that from our Parks and Rec Committee. He stated that he had no particular agenda. He was interested in getting to learn more about all the park assets. He felt that his professional skills as an entertainment producer might be useful in carrying his load on the board. He had been already to a board meeting of Parks and Rec and was already starting to participate them with information and learning and some of his input. It was also noted that his celebrity status might be of significance to the Parks and Recreation Foundation in raising private funds to support the park system. The vote was eight in favor, one opposed, district five absent. The sole negative vote was by District Two delegate Wilmer Nisinovich, who explains her vote as follows, quote, "Mr. Delabati has spent the last twenty-seven years working for the Howard Stern Program, whose coarseness and lack of standards are well-known. This reflects badly on his judgment. The notion that one can break his life into compartments is just wrong. Having an individual associated with such a program serve on the Board of Parks and Recreation sends the wrong message about what is acceptable to the youth of our town." That was her quote of her rationale. Again, the vote was eight in favor, one opposed, two abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Sodicon, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening again. Mr. Delabati is a new nominee to the Board of Parks and Rec, if you've heard. He's the producer of the Howard Stern Show. His past activities, as Chris has explained, they include coaching for the North Myannis Bulldogs, the OGRCC Babe Ruth League Baseball. He's also participated in the North Myannis' powwow fundraiser, is on the Board of Life Beat. He's raised funds, I've told, for the Cosco library, Neighbor to Neighbor, and the Arch Street Teen Center. We interviewed him for over an hour, about an hour and fifteen minutes. While it was clear to us that he's new to the work of the Board of Parks and Recreation, he indicated a sincere interest in learning more as he goes along. When asked about his interest, he said it was primarily in athletics and fields and the allocation of the town's time to different fields. He's not familiar with all the fields, for instance, when asked about Havenmire, but again, he repeated he was ready to learn about the town's parks. He uses a North Myannis park with his family. He has only attended one meeting of the Board of Parks and Rec. Questions included other concerns from our committee. Would his serving on the Board of Parks and Recreation be a disruption to the Board because of his celebrity status? Could we count on him not having the Board be a topic of conversation on the Howard Stern Show? We then took comments from the audience. They were asked to direct them to me and to the committee, not to the nominee. Here we heard many compliments from Gary's fellow coaches, neighbors, and friends about what a great asset he is to everything he does. We also heard comments that he's not all rec and not parks. On the other hand, we heard from the negative feelings of the committee that perhaps he's serving his self-interest by putting these meetings proceedings on his show and bringing media to the interview. Indeed, the Sirius Satellite reporter was in the front row the night of my meeting with a mic pointed at every speaker. We voted five, four, seven against. Districts four were three, five, nine, eleven, and twelve. Against were one, two, four, six, seven, eight, and ten. As usual, we discussed the votes, both positive and negative. The positive votes were based on Gary's interest in athletics and playing fields, that that was needed on the Board, and it could help improve the playing field's quality. Another comment was that he was thoughtful and dependable, and another comment that Gary is a great fundraiser, personally generous, and that would certainly be a good thing for the Board. The negative votes were a result of two major concerns. First, the committee has previously asked the Board of Selectmen to nominate candidates with interests in areas other than athletics and playing fields. There are other uses of parks for kids and adults not involved in organized recreation. There is a need to consider the natural resources of the town. The Board needs more balance. Nominators need to broaden their horizons and present some nominees with other qualifications. The mission statement of the Board speaks to it. I'd like to read it to you. It's brief. "The mission of the Greenwich Board of Parks and Recreation is to pursue and promote a standard of excellence in the development of comprehensive park systems and quality facilities, which encourage diverse recreational opportunities and the preservation of natural Many committee members are frustrated that such candidates have not been proposed, and they've indicated their feelings by voting no. In the past, these members have voted no, or they've abstained on other nominees." The second concern of the negative votes. Mr. Delabati has caused much concern about his ability to separate his public life from his private. This was brought up by several members of the committee. The fact that the show he produces, the Howard Stern Show, mocked the Greenwich RTM as a result of Gary's appearance at another RTM committee meeting has caused many people to wonder if his involvement on the Board of Parks and Recreation will continue to be the subject of his show. Everyone is aware of the past fallout on this subject, as unfortunate and as indirect as it has been, and is continuing. While Gary indicated this activity would cease, and one member asked him not to continue to have the Greenwich RTM members be the subject of the show, the very next morning, an excerpt of our committee's interview with yours truly speaking was on the Howard Stern Show. I have no criticism of it. It was complimentary. However, in all seriousness, he was asked, could he keep that from happening? And he did not. I don't listen to the Howard Stern Show. My daughter called me. Our committee took this assignment of this nominee extremely seriously. Interviewing someone and passing judgment on them for any reason, in my book, is a heavy call. We attempted to have a fair process and a fair report. I hope it has come across as such to you, and that when you vote, you will vote on one thing, the merit of the candidate.
Before calling upon our first speaker, I would like to remind all of our speakers, and there are approximately twenty individuals who have signed up, that, number one, there is a three-minute limit in effect. Number two, it is entirely within your right, when called upon, to either waive your right to speak or adopt remarks that have been made previously. I think it is in everyone's interest, perhaps, not to repeat statements that have already been made, and you can just indicate support for something that had been previously said, but everyone does have up to three minutes to speak. So we will begin with Drew Marzullo, selectman, to be followed by Fred Camillo, our state representative.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, distinguished guests, thank you. I would also like to thank the public in the audience for participating and coming out tonight to witness firsthand democracy at its finest. Final confirmation or appointment of candidates lies within this body. The Board of Selectmen has the authority to recommend or nominate individuals, but finality is determined by the RTM. And I say this because this sometimes long process has been our way of governing since nineteen thirty-three, and while one may subscribe to the opinion that it is flawed, the vetting process of volunteers to sit on boards and commissions, for the most part, has been conducted in a fair way. Our volunteer form of government depends on dedicated men and women willing to give up precious time and commit hundreds of hours. The sheer talent that comes before both the executive and legislative branch is nothing short of amazing. Amazing not necessarily because of how much one makes for a living or what university he or she attends, amazing because of one's willingness to serve the town they live in love. I placed Gary in nomination for that reason. He wants to serve the town he loves and give back to the community he has resided in for seventeen years. And up until two months ago, I would bet that most people in this room did not even know he has lived here, and that is because his personal and professional life has seldom been the topic of conversation. He has been a fine resident, an upstanding citizen, a devoted family man with two children, a great neighbor, a coach, and yes, the producer of the most listened-to radio program in United States history. And I say that, and may I add, this venue Gary has used, his celebrity, if you will, has provided philanthropic benefits to many, including the family victims of nine -- has provided philanthropic benefits to many, including the family victims of 9/11, raising hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. He sits on an organization to raise money for men and women who suffer from HIV and AIDS, providing them a quality of life worth living. He has consistently lent his name to athletic charities, both locally and outside the state. He has advocated for civil, gay, and animal rights, and has on countless occasions participated in Greenwich residents throughout town. He has said both publicly and privately he wishes to serve without agenda and contribute the best way he knows how. He is excited. He is energetic and wants to do right by this town. What has happened in these last three months is unfortunate. What has happened to one RTM member because of a disgusting prank has been condemned by Mr. Delabate, but equally as disgusting was a fictitious email slandering Gary himself. Disagreeing with positions on certain issues is one thing. Debate on open space versus fields is one thing. Offering opinion on beach access and fees is one thing, but an unfair attack on him personally is another. We should not be having a debate on morality or the definition of... This fine line, in my opinion, is in jeopardy of being crossed.
Thank you.
Not yet. Is that time?[678.12][678.12](Laughter).
All right. You may not have heard the 30-second warning, so I'll give you 30 more seconds.
Last sentence. All right.[686.12][686.12](Laughter). I encourage fair... All right, I'll just sum it up by thanking everyone. Again, thanking for your time, and I want to publicly thank Gary and all candidates willing to put themselves out there. We owe you a debt of gratitude. Thank you.[697.32][697.32](Applause).
I would like to ask that we hold the applause so that we can hear all the speakers within a reasonable amount of time. Fred Camillo, to be followed by Lou Caravella.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, and guests. I come to you tonight not as just a friend of Gary Delabate, but as a former member and chairman of the Board of Parks and Recreation, a board that I was very proud to serve on. And I think Gary Delabate is uniquely qualified to sit on this Board. I met Gary about 12 years ago, 13 years ago, in that corner, when I was a member of this body, representing District 12. Gary was here one night to educate himself on an issue, and I remember thinking, he's got to get up really early in the morning for work. And I thought that, because I did too. But the difference was, I had to be here. He didn't. People were coming up all night to him and saying hello to him because of his celebrity status. And he was not rude to one single person, but that's not why he was here. And that impressed me. And since then, I've seen him over the years on baseball fields, football fields, even advocating for kids looking for a wiffleball field in Riverside. He is a recreation person. And the argument that, you know, we need more Parks people, well, I'm here to tell you, I was a chairman of that Board, and I came on as a recreation guy. And most of my time was spent on that Board on Parks, on the Park side of it. I even helped write a couple master plans for our parks. So, really, when you go on a Board like Parks and Rec, you're going to be an advocate for both. And he will learn really quickly, like we all did. He has a lot of dedication. I just hope, you know, and I do respect some of the opponents and some of the things they've said. I know some of them and like them very much. But if we're going to base things on fear of what may happen, then I fear that you would reject half of the nominees that come before you. So I ask you all tonight to approve the nomination of my friend. Make it a happy birthday for him. You won't regret it, and I think you'll look back on this and say, it was much to do about nothing. Thanks for your time and consideration.[836.26][836.26](Applause).
Thank you very much. Lou Caravella, to be followed by Bob Brady. I actually neglected to announce the vote on our combined items. Those were Items 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 8, and 9. Those in favor, 191. Opposed, 1. Abstaining, 1. The combined items have carried. Mr. Caravella.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. I'm Lou Caravella, former tax collector for the town of Greenwich. Been a member of the Cosco Rotary Club for 50 years, past president of the Greenwich Old Timers Association, served on the Greenwich Library Building Fund to raise funds for Greenwich and Cosco Library, member of the user group at the Grif. I had been a local merchant in the Cosco area for 35 years. I first met Gary Delabate when I was campaigning for Tax Collector in 1998. I was down at Todd's Point in October, and Gary was there with his young son and his dad. We chatted a while. After that, I won the election. Gary dropped me a quick note congratulating me on my very close election. He said that he hadn't really known me, but he voted for me based on our meeting, and he was glad for me. The next time Gary was in Town Hall, he stopped by to say hello. In fact, he stopped by almost every time he had business in the Town Hall for the next 12 years. That's how long I've known Gary. And that time, I found him to be a genuine and honest person. He had coached football and baseball for 10 years and worked on the Myannis Powwow for just as long. He's a fixture at many charity events where he not only helps to promote the event, but often donates as well. He's a dedicated dad and a good individual. I think he would be a perfect fit for the Board of Recreation. His enthusiasm and his love for this town are obvious. If we start running every candidate through the mill the way Gary has been run through, we run the risk of scaring very competent volunteers away. We have a person who wants to do the job, who has the time to do the job, and is quite qualified to do the job. What he does during the day should not enter into the discussion at all. He's coached, volunteered, and donated his time to many things in this town for the last 17 years, and his job has never been an issue. I should be... It shouldn't be one now. I strongly urge you to vote for Gary Delabate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bob Brady, to be followed by Marla Weston.
Good evening. Bob Brady, District Five. I rise to oppose this appointment. It is rare the RTM sees a nomination that is in a position closely paralleling the nominee's professional avocation, in this case, that of a principal advisor. Rare is still that we have the opportunity to gauge the effect of that advice. Howard Stern is a misogynist bully who uses his broadcast as a bully pulpit to personally disparage and attack those with whom he disagrees. If Mr. Delabate is advising Mr. Sterns to carry out these attacks, he's an effective advisor, but demonstrating values that I do not share, and I hope that the RTM does not share. If Mr. Delabate has been advising Mr. Sterns to not make such attacks, he's been ineffective and failing as an advisor to his principal. In neither case should we, this RTM, appoint him as an advisor to our first Selectman. Finally, I share a concern expressed by at least one RTM member that in serving on any town committee, Mr. Delabate's mere presence would intimidate and stifle opposition to his positions, given the publicity that has been given those opposing positions by Mr. Stern. I urge you to vote no on this appointment. Thank you.
Marla Weston, to be followed by Joan Stewart. Is Marla Weston here?
I object to the nomination. I'm Marla Weston, District One.
Thank you. Joan Stewart, to be followed by Jim Bonney.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, for this opportunity to speak this evening. I have lived in Greenwich since 1967, and my husband was born and raised here. I'm a graduate of Greenwich Country Day School, Greenwich High School, and Mount Holyoke College. My father chose Greenwich to raise his family here because he loved the schools, the parks, and the people, and I am truly grateful to still be able to live here. I've been following the meetings on this topic, and with all due respect, I feel the Board lately seems to be acting more like a political country club rather than the professionals that I know they really are. As an executive recruiter for the past 15 years, I sincerely hope you are making your decision based on the stellar credentials, high energy, and intellect that Mr. Delabate has, rather than based on the feelings, emotions, and perceptions of a few individuals who have expressed their opposition during these discussions. Mr. Delabate is a highly regarded community member, father and husband, whose qualifications exceed the scope of this volunteer position he is being considered for. I cold-called Mr. Delabate a year ago when I was seeking corporate sponsorship for a fitness event for the Greenwich Family YMCA. Mr. Delabate is not even a member of the Y, but he was gracious to return my call and to subsequently did arrange to have his place of business make a contribution. I only mention this as it is evident to me that Mr. Delabate sincerely cares about his community, and I encourage you to vote in his favor. Thank you very much.
Jim Bonney, District Four, to be followed by Anthony De Scoli.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. My name is Jim Bonney. I've been a police officer here for over 20 years. I'm also the president of the Silver Shield Association, have been so for the last seven. I was excited to see Gary Delabate was interested in serving on the Parks and Recreation Board. Gary's a model father and a family man. Gary has been involved in Greenwich sports for years, and I've seen him personally coach football on numerous occasions, and I've had dealings with him through the Flag Football League. Gary's a desire to volunteer and to serve our town. I feel that he has faced unprecedented scrutiny for wishing to serve on a volunteer advisory board. All prospective applicants deserve to be treated in a mature and professional manner throughout the entire process. When we fail to treat our own citizenry in an appropriate way, we invite scrutiny from the outside. If this applicant was handled appropriately, there wouldn't be eight newspaper articles and radio commentary on a relatively minor Board appointment. Gary Delabate and I share many things in common. We both grew up in Long Island. We moved here 17 years ago. I've known... Gary lived here for 17 years, and I've never heard a peep from Gary in a negative... or anything about Gary in a negative way. I used to listen to the show, and he never mentioned where he lived, ever. I dare say that had the hijinks of the latest meetings not occurred with the carrying of bags of feces and such, then it wouldn't have made the radio or the newspaper. But, you know, he's going to get blamed for it, no matter what happens. I know that Gary and I both had similar reasons for moving here. Greenwich is known to have wonderful... to be a wonderful and safe town with beautiful parks and beaches and quality schools. Gary expressed to me that he wished to serve the town of Greenwich so that he could... so Greenwich could be progressive in our utilization of our parks and playing fields and beaches. I hope that you will look past the drama that we have all had to endure during the past few weeks and make a professional and mature decision on this matter. And it's my suggestion that we allow Gary Delabate to serve his town and our town.
Thank you. Anthony De Scoli, District 12, to be followed by Beth Moore, District 12.
Mr. Moderator, fellow RTM and guest, thank you for having me speak. My name is Anthony De Scoli, District 12. I'm a resident here for nine years, and I have two kids at North Myannis School. And I just want to make some observations. I'm not a personal friend of Gary, per se. I just live in the town, but I see the effects of what he's been doing. And I just want to make a couple of comments. In the last 10 years, can I see a show of hands of anybody who has seen any kind of public inappropriate activity as taking place in our schools and our parks as a result of Gary's activities? Okay? So that's really the point here. There's definitely a distinction between public and private life, and what really defines a person is what they do, okay? Not what they say. So the other part is, North Myannis School, I'm actually a volunteer as well, as is my wife. And again, the amount of work and effort to contribute to enhancing and bringing our schools forward is quite substantial, and he has a very substantial track record in doing so. The other aspect is, one of the comments I heard, I actually attended the committee meeting that evening last week, and one of the comments were, there were four or five out of nine who represent our fields, the rec part, not necessarily the park part, in saying that it was really overweighted in that particular area. Well, when you really think about it, how many complaints do we really get about our parks, about the beaches and the parks? There's very, very few. Really where our biggest issues are is scheduling. There's quite a significant amount of usage in our fields. There's quite a significant amount of work that needs to be done in an area to improve the efficiency. And that's really an expertise that he brings, and he'll be able to help improve that situation. And then one other comment I just wanted to make in general, you know, what's the spirit of this body? Everyone is a volunteer here. Does anyone have a paid position? Okay.[1571.74][1571.74](Laughter). See, that's really the whole point. Everybody's volunteering their time, and really, everybody's trying to contribute to make this town better. And that's exactly what he's trying to accomplish. Thank you.
Beth Moore, to be followed by Ross Moore.
My name's Dr. Beth Moore, and I'm a physician in town. Currently, my practice is limited to cancer patients locally. I am extremely proud to call Gary Delabate my friend. To briefly describe Gary, I'd call him thoughtful, caring, and even-tempered. And for those on committees, he's also extremely likable, which makes things go a little easier. Really many of the words used tonight to describe other candidates all apply to Gary. He is special and exceptional to anyone who knows him even just a little bit. I think he would completely be able to separate governance from personal matters, which was asked of another candidate who has already been passed. He's involved in our community in many ways, and perhaps more than some of us that think we're involved. He's involved as a coach, as a parent, as a fundraiser, and as a communications professional separate from what he does during the day. He very much wants to give back to his community, and like other candidates, he may have much to learn in his area, but that's been accepted of other candidates. He would be an avid and energetic student for our Parks and Recreation. It would be a mistake for Greenwich to fail to support Gary tonight, and I urge you all to support him. Thank you.
Ross Moore, to be followed by Lucy Krasner.
My name is Ross Moore. I live right near Gary. I'm a neighbor. And I want to address these comments not to a lot of the people who sound like they've made up their mind, whether it's pro-Gary or negative Gary. I've lived here for nine years. I'm retired for the past year and a half, so I am around a lot. As a neighbor and a friend of Gary Delabate and the family, I want to assure those of you who don't know Gary and the Delabates that these are the great people of this town. And to judge them based on some other measure, some other benchmark, we're all free to do that, but it's a mistake. As a neighbor, I can tell you that the Delabates are really the finest people that we know in this town, or certainly among them. As the father, a very protective father of two beautiful girls, I can assure you that, you know, the word misogynist was thrown out here tonight, and it's an ugly word. And I respect the gentleman for his time, but it is an ugly word to throw around in a room like this, in a serious situation like this. And Gary's sons are two of the finest young men at North Myannis and Eastern and Greenwich High School. They're sitting right there. My daughter, Ally, her first boy-girl outing was with Lucas. And when I found out it was with Lucas, I couldn't have been more thrilled. So, please... So, please, let's think about what we're talking about here. We're talking about a person's character, so take it from those of us who know him. He has exemplary character. So I urge you all to support Gary Delabate.
Thank you. Lucy Krasner, to be followed by Nick Bancroft.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I rise to speak against this candidate. I am very concerned that he will turn the membership, if he gets it, on the Parks and, Board of Parks and Rec to be a circus. I believe what happened in the program the day after the Appointments Committee meeting met with him first was self-serving, not community-serving, by bringing up things on a public radio show that happened in the town committee. There are very sensitive issues which come before the Board of Parks and Rec. Pricing for our use of the beaches, allocation of the playing fields, and I am very concerned that anybody, that these issues will become public. Although all of the meetings of the plan, of the boards and all of our town meetings, our public meetings, to make them public and for fodder on a radio show the next day concerns me greatly. I am afraid that members will indeed be intimidated, as I think some people here tonight have been intimidated, to speak against this candidate. To record meetings and to have them available for conversation the next day is truly inappropriate. I think that when we speak about the merit of a candidate, I think that we have seen that he lacks judgment in making this material available to the Stern Show the following day. Had he not made it available, there would have been no way that that show would have had the information on that show the next day, where he mocked one of the members of the Appointments Committee who abstained, didn't even vote against him, but abstained. The person was mocked, and I think this is extremely inappropriate, shows a total lack of judgment as to how to handle himself. One of the speakers said that we should not worry about what may happen. I think we have seen what has happened. And I am very concerned that members here at the RTM might not really be aware of the sequence of events of what actually happened. And it's sometimes hard to get a feel from that, from the Greenwich Times, you get pieces of it, some people are quoted. But, as I say, the next day, there were comments about members of the Appointments Committee. They were called names. This was just completely inappropriate.
Thirty seconds.
And I am very concerned that this will continue to happen, and that these meetings will be made a public, they will be made a mockery, and I urge you to vote against this candidate and to see his lack of good judgment.
Nick Bancroft, to be followed by John Harkins.
Good evening. My name is Nick Bancroft, and I am a student at Greenwich High School. I used to play football for the North Myanis Bulldogs, and Mr. Delabate was one of my coaches. I now play at Greenwich High School, and I coach the Bulldogs with Mr. Delabate. Mr. Delabate is a role model for me and the other boys he works with. He is fair, dedicated, and committed to giving back to the community. He is one of the people who inspired me to go back and volunteer as a junior coach for the Bulldogs. In addition to coaching youth sports, Mr. Delabate has worked with my mom, helping with Bulldog fundraisers and organized bands, organizing bands for the North Myanis School Powwow. I think Mr. Delabate will be a great representative of the towns, town park and recreation facility. Thank you.
Thank you. John Harkins, to be followed by Angela Schulte.
Mr. Moderator, members of the representative town meeting and guests, I wish to speak against Mr. Delabate's nomination to the Boards of Parks and Recreation. For me and for others who wish to consider the town first and foremost, the toxic atmosphere of the Appointments Committee, and again, of the Parks and Recreation Committee, is a foretaste of what may become a carnival. Just as before and despite the nominee's reported assurance that our deliberations would not become rehashed on his broadcast, we are likely to become swept up in the fray after this and other meetings. So much for compartmentalization of one's life. We were elected to represent the residents, our appointees the same. Is increased radio listenership and, dare I suggest it, profit more important to a nominee than the interests of the town? Ask yourselves which of us wishes to be subject, on a continuing basis, to what some have called a circus? Is this how someone compartmentalizes his life successfully? In addition to asking you to vote against Mr. Delabate's nomination, I would ask that we encourage him to withdraw his name respectfully and quietly from consideration at this time, and where he can continue to serve the town ably to seek areas where there's less likelihood for real or manufactured controversy, where his service can truly put the interests of the town first, the entire town first. Please join me in voting against Mr. Delabate for this position. Thank you.
Angela Schulte, to be followed by Ms. Kelly. I'm sorry, I can't make out the first name, but it says, Kelly, District Twelve. Angela Schulte?
It's Angela Swift, actually, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, RTM members and guests. My name is Angela Swift. I've been a Greenwich resident for almost twenty years and have known Gary for thirteen. I consider Gary and his family among my closest friends. My daughter has babysat his boys in his home, and my son played football for the North Myanis Bulldogs and was coached by Gary. I do not believe that what Gary does for a living has any bearing on his ability to serve on the Parks and Board, Parks and Recreation Board. This meeting this evening begs the question, do we want to go down the slippery slope of making one's livelihood a litmus test for eligibility to serve our community? I hope for the sake of Greenwich, we do not. I urge you to vote for my good friend, Gary Delabate.
Thank you. Ms. Kelly, to be followed by Christine Edwards, District Eight.
Good evening. My name is Lorraine Kelly. Sorry about that. I have very illegible handwriting. I've lived in Greenwich for almost nineteen years, and I've raised my four children here, still raising my two young boys, who are sixteen. I've enjoyed all that Greenwich has to offer, the wonderful schools, parks, fields, beaches, the sound, and its people. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Gary Delabate's appointment to the Parks and Rec Board. I have known Gary and his family for over ten years, and for the last five have had the good fortune of living next door to Mary, Lucas, Jackson, and Gary. They are wonderful neighbors and wonderful people. But back to Gary. To put it simple, to know Gary is to love him. Is he perfect? No, he's not perfect. But who is? Let me tell you a little bit, very quickly, because a lot of what I wanted to say has already been said, about the Gary that we have come to know. The Gary I know is kind, caring, and an involved father. He is generous to a fault, someone who enjoys his, enjoys his life and wants others to have the same opportunities that he has had. He is a very loyal person, loyal to his family, his friends. He has never forgotten where he came from, and just ask his friends from Long Island who caravan up to Connecticut a couple of times a year. It's really quite a lovely scene. Gary is painfully loyal to his teams, both the ones he coaches and the professional ones he roots for, year after painful year. He is still true blue and green. Gary is very candid and very honest. He does not hesitate to tell you what he thinks, and I think you've heard that over and over tonight from several people. He's enormously generous to the youth of this town, something else that you've heard, so I won't repeat that. But I think we need to take very seriously his ability to support this community in a very special way. He never hesitates to give of himself and his resources. He is kind to young and old alike. My sons practically live in his home, and my daughters would like to. Gary's devotion to his mother is to be admired. And my mother, yes, my eighty-year-old mother and Gary went to the same college, so every time he sees her, he finds something to say that brings her back to those wonderful years. Gary wasn't there when she was there. Gary gives of himself in other ways, and this wasn't mentioned tonight, so I will mention it. A few years back, he traveled to Afghanistan over the Fourth of July weekend to entertain American troops. He brought a lot of smiles to a lot of very lonely soldiers, something I don't think a lot of people knew about. But all of this is nice and makes Gary sound like a guy you'd like to know or even have as a neighbor. But what is most important to me as a parent about Gary, and especially as a parent of sixteen-year-old sons, is the great example that he sets for my boys. He is a role model in how he lives his life. He's always respectful, always polite, and he is raising his sons to be exactly the same way. He is honest and works very, very hard. He's tolerant and accepting of all types of people and all points of view. Isn't that important? He's a good listener, and he doesn't always have to be right. Gary always puts his family first. He cares deeply about his country, his community, and his friends. When I asked my sons for words to describe Gary, they both, independently, they're twins, but they do separate every now and then, came up with the same words: generous, kind, loyal, honest, knowledgeable, respectful.
Thirty seconds.
All about family and community, fun, and always on time, something that I am not. Gary's now in a position to give back, to give even more of himself to this community, to our town. Why wouldn't we give him that chance? Why wouldn't we give ourselves that opportunity? I urge you to support his nomination to the Board, and I thank you for this opportunity to address you tonight. Thank you.
Christine Edwards, to be followed by Tom Canelius.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, panel, and our colleagues and guests. Fasten your seat belts, you're all on TV. Does everyone know that? And those of you who say this is only for Greenwich residents, you can get this on the Internet, everything can be downloaded. Those of you who may be falling asleep in your seats, you're on TV. Those of you who are reading a magazine, I know some of them are, Beck, you're on TV. We are all on public display, and more and more of our committees are also open. I think the word is that we like transparent. This is transparent government, and it's good that we're on TV, that we're on the radio, that what we say is not in private, and too much of a country club, as somebody brought up. Public information is important. Transparency is what we're all crying for in government. The interesting thing is, you have to pay to listen to Sirius Radio. Any subscribers out there? Yeah, there are a few. I'm not. I have to pay for it, so I don't listen. I think that it's true that anyone can come to a meeting and make a tape. Anyone could have done that to any planning and zoning meetings, any budget overview meetings, whatever it may be. They're all open and available to the public. But I don't think it's Gary that's saying any of these issues, that people are saying, oh, bad things are being said. It can be said by anyone, but remember Voltaire. Everyone remember Voltaire? I may disagree with what you have to say, but I will defend to the death your right to say it. And the funny thing is, maybe what we need is a little sense of humor. Does anyone know there's a bimbo bakery in Greenwich? Who would think of that? Bimbo Bakery, and I'm a blonde, but I don't mind. And maybe we need to have more of a sense of humor here. And we have to accept the fact that government that we want, we want to have transparent. To be a citizen, to be a real citizen, is to step up, to volunteer, and to serve. I would hate to see anyone discouraged from stepping up and giving time to serve. There's nothing that I've heard here that's a negative at all about Gary Delabate, and I don't know him, so I can't really say. He's my friend. I know his children. I don't. But I certainly know that he's a man who, from the people who've spoken here-
Thirty seconds.
-have all said very good things about him as an individual. There are people who can be raked over the coals, and they still want to serve, and I think that that's so commendable, that I ask all of you, I urge all of you, to follow what Voltaire says and what one of the other people here said. Measure him by what he does, by his actions, and he is a very, very great resource to our community, that we can only be proud, wants to help and serve us. And I thank you for your attention. Remember, you're on TV.
Tom Canelius, to be followed by Arlene Lamazo.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Canelius. I'm chairman of District Three, and I'm a member of the Appointments Committee. I was at the first meeting when we approved Gary Delabate's appointment. I do not know Gary personally, but there are a few things that bother me in this whole process. Where do we draw the line on who we decide, or what job they have qualifies them to serve on a volunteer committee? Maybe we should rewrite the charter and decide who gets the job and who doesn't, or what kind of job they could do. He's not a crook. He's not, he's a family man. He's a good guy, from what I understand. He coaches kids. Everybody speaks highly of him. And what, as we, the RTM, where I sat next to the member who brought the feces into the second meeting of our Appointments Committee and dropped it in on the cafeteria table, if that's not to create a circus atmosphere-
Mr. Canelius, please, just address the nominee. We are not, we are not-
I support Mr. Delabate, and I hope we, as an RTM, act deliberately and as grown-ups in this process. Thank you.
Arlene Lamazo, to be followed by Peter Tessi.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests. I'm Arlene Lamazo from District Six. I've been a resident of Greenwich for over forty-six years, and I've served on the RTM for over twenty-five years. When I first read the call and realized that Mr. Delabate was someone who worked for Howard Stern, that didn't bother me. I was aware that, you know, professional life and private life can be kept separate, and I assumed that that was going to be the case, and I was favorable. I was impressed by the fact that he had served for nine years as a coach and seemed to be successful in doing that. Since then, I've learned he's done a lot of other wonderful things in the community, and that impresses me. But what happened subsequent to that disturbed me terribly, and I can't vote for him because subsequent to the Appointments Committee meeting, a member of this body was vilified on public radio. We in this body disagree with each other from time to time, and our moderator does not allow us to make comments about one another that are of a personal nature. That's the way we conduct business here. And certainly, when the Appointments Committee met, it's understood that what happens there is something that's shared there in the room, and then with the committees and so on, it's public to that extent. But to be on the Howard Stern Show the next day in such a negative, I believe he even mocked the community, made remarks about the town of Greenwich, I can't support it. I can't support this nomination because of that. It just turned me off, and I would urge you not to vote for this at this time. Thank you.
Peter Tessi, our first electman, to be followed by Gary Delabate.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. I would like to express my support for the sentiments that have been stated tonight by my colleague, Mr. Marzullo, and certainly, Mr. Teis joins me in reaffirming our support for Mr. Delabate. Having the opportunity to interview dozens of individuals, residents of our community, I am able to take away many impressions, many first impressions, and of course, those are carried through in their ultimate service on many of the boards and commissions. But when I first met Gary Delabate for the first time in my office, I was struck by a genuine innocence about him in terms of his desire to serve our community. I was struck by his unassuming manner and humility, coming before the Board, and truly articulating his desires, his desires to make a greater contribution than he's already made. And I felt that we had a real winner in Gary, someone who can contribute greatly to the success of our town, notably our Parks and Recreation System. We have many volunteers, you certainly exemplify that, and each of you feel in some way you're giving something greater than yourself to our town, and you are. And that's truly what Gary wants to do, give- And you are. And that's truly what Gary wants to do, give something greater than himself to make the town of Greenwich, notably its park system, better. And simply, that is why I will support him, have supported him, and continue to support him, because there's that genuine desire to serve and to make a difference. And that's truly what this is about tonight. So I would ask you to support him in allowing him to make that contribution. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say that no matter what happens this evening, no matter how the vote goes, I feel like it's the movie It's a Wonderful Life. I never knew I had so many great friends, and I thank you all for coming out to speak on my behalf. I feel like, I feel like I'm sitting in the back of my funeral, but I'm not dead yet. Not yet. A lot has been said and written about me in the last month, so I thought it would be nice to put a face to the guy you've heard so much about, and to the gentleman that asked me to step down before. I respectfully decline. I've come too far to turn back now. You've heard quite a few people get up here who've known me for a very long time, people who've worked with me on a day-to-day basis over a number of years, who can attest to my character. You've also heard a bunch of folks get up and speak against me in a very negative way, people who think they know me yet have never met me. Many of you received a call today from someone urging you not to vote for me. She spoke about me as if she knows me, but she doesn't know me. She's never met me. In fact, none of my detractors have even taken the time to talk to the people who actually do know me to see who I really am. So I will tell you who I am. I am the producer of the Howard Stern Show. I'm a sixteen-and-a-half-year resident of this beautiful town. I've been married to my lovely wife for almost nineteen years, and I have two sons who were born in this town, a sixteen-year-old junior who plays football at the high school, and a thirteen-year-old who's at Eastern who plays football and lacrosse. And they're both in the audience tonight. I'm glad they are, because they should see how the process works one way or the other. I've got nothing to hide. I'm not going to get in. I wrote a bunch of stuff about my coaching, but you've heard it all. You know, I coach, and I've raised money. Most important, one of the things that hasn't been spoken about, is I'm a resident of this town who takes full advantage of the amenities offered to us.
Mr. Delabate, let me just assure you. Just take your time and-
Okay. Am I going too fast? Sorry. I'm getting a little nervous. I'm nervous. I'm a resident of this town who takes full advantage of the amenities offered to us. I frequent Todd's Point every summer, take hikes in Myanna's River Park, stroll in Penny Park, take my mom to Byron Point, and use the ferry to go out to the island. There is not a field in this town that I have not played or coached on numerous times. In short, I've been around a bit. I do also want to point out that when, I want to address one of the things that came up about how I ran onto the show the next morning to talk about what happened. There was a public meeting. There was an article that was in the paper the next day. It was out there for anybody to see. If you're gonna invite the public to your public meeting, you can't decide who comes and how they discuss you. If that's the case, we should shut those cameras down right now, because it's all out there. We are public officials. But I want to make it clear that I did not run to discuss it on the show. There was an article that was read that's up for discussion. I went in front of the Parks and Recreation Committee last week, and there was some concern that I may not be fully qualified, that I may be too heavy on the fields and sports aspect of the job. I told them that this is an area of expertise for me, but it's not the only thing I bring to the table. I've spoken to several people already on the board, and they all told me the same thing, that they came in with an area that they were good in, and they learned as they went along. Every single one of them told me that they came in doing something. Nobody came in as the full Renaissance man that was described as Scott, who's now been on for twenty years. He clearly is a Renaissance man now, but he didn't start that way. I felt that pleasing the folks at that meeting the other night was near impossible, because there were twelve people with twelve very different agendas. And agreeing with one of those people meant alienating the other eleven. I can tell you this, I have no agenda, because if I did, I would have quit a month ago. The people will have you believe that if you don't vote for me, there's another volunteer candidate around the corner. Now, all of you are on the RTM, and you're all volunteers, correct? And I think you know how hard it is to find an impassioned candidate who works hard, who wants to do a good job. I don't think those people grow on trees. I have the skill, I have the time, and I hope the thing that you could see most about me is that I have the enthusiasm needed for the job. I love this town, and I want to be part of a group that can make an already amazing place even better. Thank you.
Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number three, and proceed to poll your delegation. While we are voting, we will continue with the business of the meeting. Item seven is the next item to come before us. First electman, Peter Tessie.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Item number seven, resolve that the following named person, nominated by the Board of Selectmen, be appointed a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring three thirty-one fourteen. Frederick H. Brooks, Sr.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item seven has been moved and seconded. Mr. Berg with the report of our land use committee.
Mr. Von Berg.
(laugh) Von Berg, right. Evening again. Mr. Frederick Brooks, Sr., came to the land use committee meeting last Monday night. He is being nominated to be a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. He has served as an alternate for the last four years. He is Planning and Zoning Commission's representative on the Nathaniel Witherell Building Committee. He said that he has attended all but one of the Planning and Zoning hearings in the last four years, as well as the Monday briefings. And he explained that the Monday briefings are open to the public. Planning and zoning staff uses these briefings to explain applicable regulations. The public and applicants are permitted to be there, but they're not permitted to speak. Mr. Brooks said he has learned a great deal while serving as an alternate. He said he does not recall dissenting with the commission on any votes, but said he disagreed with the commission on some items on which he was not voting. He said, he explained that a high percentage of the Planning and Zoning Commission decisions are unanimous, because most applications are heard at multiple meetings. The hearings are exhaustive, and by the time they get to the vote, all commissioners have the same facts. Mr. Brooks said he played a central role in the development of our new plan of conservation and development. He believes that many of our regulations are overly complicated, resulting in enormous expense to applicants. He acknowledged that zoning enforcement has been a problem in town. He said many, he said big organizations make mistakes, but that Greenwich Land Use Staff is very professional. He defended decisions that the commission has made, including the Simmons Lane case. And when asked about Chase Bank at the Deerfield Corner by the library, he said that has not yet come before planning and zoning. Our vote on Frederick Brooks was ten in favor, two opposed, no abstentions. The two no votes, District Five, said the commission needs a broader perspective. It needs a lawyer, a conservationist, a preservationist, a broader range of views. He said his vote is not at all personal. District Seven also indicated a desire for a better balance of commissioners on the, on the conservation side, with a better mix of engineers, a legal... There appears, and he, the District Seven representative said there appears to be a bias to the development side of planning and zoning for those, those with interest in real estate development, contracting, and architects. And that various recent decisions of the Planning and Zoning Commission seem inconsistent with the-
Excuse me, Mr. Berg, let me just ask those seated to please give attention to our speakers. If there are any conversations that need to take place, please go outside the hall to conduct those. Mr. Berg?
I haven't voted on this previous item, so-
All right, we'll hold that card. We'll get it to you.
So, so the District Seven representative felt that until better decisions are made and more legislative legislation is written that's consistent with the mission and issues specifically outlined in the two thousand nine Plan of Conservation and Development, that he feels there's a need for new, fresh thinking, those who produce better results. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with the Appointments Committee report on item seven.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks is a well-known person to our committee. He served, as you know, as alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and now he's being brought up to replace the regular seat vacated by Mr. Farrar. We saw Mr. Brooks on March first of this month. In his business career, Mr. Brooks held chief executive positions in Wall Street Manufacturing Corporations, as well as several important White House appointments. He mentioned that the P&amp;Z Commission schedules about twenty-two public hearings, twenty-two workshops that go along with that, those are about three to five hours themselves, and several public information meetings. He figures about fifty meetings each year. He has missed only one. He only recused himself twice. He is also in the P&amp;Z liaison with the Nathaniel Witherell Building Committee. In his next term, he wishes to focus on simplifying the regulations, which he feels are too complicated and create unnecessary costs to applicants and the public. He would also like to promote a mentoring program for each new appointee on the P&amp;Z. In other words, where one of the older regular members would take a new member under their wing and kind of bring them up. I want to make this clear, that when he said he wanted to simplify the regulations, he did not want to make them easier or less stringent on applicants. He just wanted to make them not so confusing and difficult. The vote was ten, excuse me, eleven in favor, none opposed, and one abstention, that was District One again abstaining on principle over concerns for the decline in town and his district caused essentially by the current P&amp;Z Commission. He was wary of the POCD Committee's creation and the lack of sufficient representation of District One on the POCD Downtown Committee. He stated that his district delegation felt that their district area was, for the primary purpose, residential use. He would abstain on principle on all the P&amp;Z candidates not to do to any opinion about the nominees themselves. He stated that he preferred to be led by the land use committee on these matters. Thank you. The vote was eleven zero one.
Ms. Stoffer? Discussion on item seven. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number seven, and proceed to poll your delegation. All right. Item number ten now comes before us. May we have that resolution? Peter Tessie, our first electman.
Item number ten, resolve that the following named person, nominated by the Board of Selectmen, be reappointed a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring three thirty-one fourteen. Paul S. Marchesi.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item ten has been moved and seconded. Peter Berg with the land use committee report.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, Mr. Marchesi was traveling this past week and unable to attend our meeting. The land use committee moved to postpone this item, and the vote was all in favor. So we'll see Mr. Marchesi before the next meeting and be back with a report.
All right. Mr. Von Keiseling, do you have anything to add?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Von Keiseling with the Appointments Committee report.
We saw Mr. Marchesi on March the first. We voted for him eleven in favor, none opposed, one abstaining. That was District One again. We interviewed Mr. Marchesi. He spent eight years on the Planning and Zoning Commission. He is ready to retire in some frustration, having difficulty getting new zoning accepted. He is semi-retired licensed architect with his own small boutique firm. Previously, he was the chief architect for the New York Port Authority and the World Trade Center. He decided to continue on the P&amp;Z Commission since the POCD, which he had a major part in writing, was adopted and enables the creation of many new zoning regulations and amendments. He is particularly interested, again, like Mr. Brooks, in clarifying the regulations and simplifying them. The problem is, he said that even if you have, go to the books and you look at the regulations before you apply, your chances are, even if you feel that you apply, it's a fifty-fifty chance you'll get turned down, which he thought was not being clarity. So he's looking to do that. We voted for him eleven zero one.
Thank you. Mr. Berg? Do you want to make a motion to postpone this to our next meeting?
So I move that we postpone till the next meeting.
All right. That being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. All those, I can call for a voice vote, this being procedural. All those in favor of the land use committee motion to postpone item ten to our April meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. I do have the result of the vote on item three, the appointment of Gary Delabate to the Board of Parks and Recreation. Those in favor, one nineteen. Opposed, sixty-four. Abstaining, seven. That item has carried. All right. Continuing with the business of the meeting, item eleven now comes before us. Selectman David Tice with that resolution.
Mr. Moderator, be it resolved that the following named person, nominated by the Board of Selectmen, be reappointed a regular member of the Alarm Appeals Board for a term expiring three thirty-one fifteen. Thomas Zach.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item eleven has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports on this item, beginning with Mr. Von Keiseling and the Appointments Committee report.
Yes. Mr. Zach is a Renomination Appeals Board, term expiring two fifteen, as you heard. We were unable to meet with Mr. Zach prior to this meeting. He is returning incumbent with considerable experience in the field of firefighting. We've interviewed him several times before. He will serve until replaced, so it would pleasure the RTM if they wish to postpone him or not.
Dr. Delman with the report of our Town Services Committee.
We met with him. He's a great applicant. We voted eleven zero zero in favor.
Mr. Von Keiseling?
We have no action from my committee on it.
All right. No proposed motion to postpone.
No motion to be made.
All right. Discussion on item eleven. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number eleven, and proceed to poll your delegation. Item number twelve now comes before us. Selectman David Tice.
Mr. Moderator, be it resolved that the following named person, nominated by the Board of Selectmen, be reappointed an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring three thirty-one two thousand and fourteen. Peter B. Levy.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item twelve has been moved and seconded. Mr. Berg with the land use committee report.
So Mr. Peter Levy is being reappointed as an alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission. You'll recall that we, we met with and voted on Mr. Levy just three months ago. He was filling a term that was vacant, so now we have, now he's being appointed for a full term. Mr. Levy is involved in managing commercial real estate in New York State. He said he has not been involved, he has not yet voted on any item as an alternate. He has attended all meetings and briefings. He is realizing how much there is to learn. He said some of the cases are heart-wrenching. Our vote on Mr. Levy was ten in favor, one opposed, one abstention. The, the no vote was- The no vote was based on, again, on not a personal matter, but rather the composition of the board, that it's too oriented toward development and too many realtors and people involved in real estate, and not enough conservationists, and needs a lawyer, and other people that would give greater balance to the commission. So again, our vote, and the abstention was District 7 for similar concerns and wanted to discuss it with the district. So again, our vote was 10 in favor, one opposed, one abstention.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keisling with our Appointments Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We saw Mr. Levy again. As was mentioned, he was with us just recently. We saw him on February 8th. He's re-interviewed, and this is his first term on his own. He filled out the unexpired thing, unexpired session prior of Ms. Alvin. While District 10, Ms. Caldwell expressed concern for the P&amp;Z sensitivity to neighborhoods, the committee felt that he had shown well and should be reappointed a full term. The vote was 10-0-0. Districts 1 and 5 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on item 12. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number 12, and proceed to poll your delegation? Item 13 now comes before us. First selectman Peter Tessie.
Mr. Moderator, item number 13 is a charter amendment. It reads, "Resolve that Article 4, Section 45 of the Charter of the Town entitled Flood and Erosion Control Board be amended as follows. Section 45 Flood and Erosion Control Board. There shall be in the town a Flood and Erosion Control Board, which shall consist of five members and two alternate members. The members and alternate members shall be electors of the town, and their method of selection in term of office shall be determined by ordinance adopted by the representative town meeting, and it is the same as it appears on the call."
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 13 has been moved and seconded. Who would like to begin? Mr. Von Keisling with the Appointments Committee report.
Again, we were unable to meet on this item, as there was not a sufficient notice under our committee rules. It is the duty of the Appointments Committee to remind you to nominate members of the Flood and Erosion Control Board. If passed, this amendment would have the Appointments Committee nominate alternates as well. Last spring, when the Appointments Committee was considering nominations for the two regular seats, it was discovered that there was a sufficiency of qualified candidates, and that the workload of the Flood and Erosion Control Board is expected to increase. Concern for succession plan for long-serving members, two of them have been 20 years, was also raised. This information was conveyed to the Board of Selectmen and the Law Department. Your Appointments Chair worked with these parties to draft the appropriate charter change language, which was adopted by the Board of Selectmen and recommended to this RTM. I want to also commend the Public Works Committee, who brought this to our attention as a possibility and worked with us on this, and I think this is a good example of cooperation between the various committees to get something done and accomplished. Thank you.
Rick Crowell with the Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, fellow members. The Public Works Committee met Monday evening. Joining us for the meeting were Amy Seibert, Commissioner of Public Works, and First Selectman Peter Tessie. These amendments actually originated on the Public Works Committee last year during the interview process, and I would also like to recognize the efforts of the Chair of the Appointments Committee, the Appointments Committee, and the First Selectman for bringing this initiative forward. This is a RTM initiative, and it is something that we should fully endorse. During the interview process last year of two of the reappointments, we had a lot of discussion about the importance of the flooding issues in the community and the excessive amount of work that the Flood and Erosion Control Board was now undertaking to go through both the short-term review and long-term planning for controlling flooding within the community. The potential members of, or the potential appointees at that time, I should say, had expressed their concern that the board grow more than the five members. They felt that that was a very good working group. It was a good working size. They got a lot accomplished at their meetings, but did recognize the fact that they were not going to be there forever, and that there should be some succession planning, and that potentially the best way to go about that was to have alternates to Flood and Control Board, so that they could learn the process, understand what they've been going through over the last few years, and begin to groom them for the future as these folks would move on. We thought this was a very good initiative, and we had recommended this at the meeting when we gave a report on those appointees, and we're glad to see it come to fruition here at the full RTM. I will say that we did recognize that there were some typos and some language that needed to be clarified within the call, but as we are very fortunate to have a very astute Legislative and Rules Committee, I'm sure Mr. Wells, as he has circulated today, will take care of that in his report. So the Public Works Committee voted 11-0-0 with District 3 absent. Thank you.
Here, here, on the Astute Legislative and Rules Committee. Before continuing the reports, I do have the results of the vote on item seven, which is the appointment of Frederick Brooks to be a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those in favor, 170; opposed, 14; abstaining, 7. That item has carried. Mr. Berg on item 13.
So on item 13 being the charter revision for the Flood and Erosion Control Board, we had First Selectman Peter Tessie with us. He explained that this charter change is limited simply to adding two members to this board, and that the RTM has the authority to adopt it. And he also added, in addition to the other information that you've already heard, that there are able candidates available to serve. We know of some of them, but that wouldn't limit anybody who's watching or listening who might be interested contacting us and letting us know of their interest. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me just say this, we normally put this notice in the call, but this being a charter change pursuant to Section 67B of the Charter, in order to make this change, it requires a majority vote of the membership of the RTM. We have 230 members, so that would be 116 affirmative votes are required. This is one of those items where if you abstain, if you were to leave, that's essentially a no vote. Mr. Wells with the report of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Thank you.
The Chairman of our Astute Legislative and Rules Committee.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and my new best friend, Rick Crowell. We took this matter up last Monday evening. We had Attorney John Wetmore of the Law Department address our committee with respect to the item, which seeks to add two alternate members to the Board, the FECB. Just so it's clear, we are not only seeking to amend the charter by passing this resolution, we're also seeking to amend our town code, specifically ordinance number 2-17 of the town code. We noted after discussing this matter with Attorney Wetmore that the second resolve clause is a typographical error. It just repeats what is in the first resolve clause. And so we moved to amend that, and all of the amendments I'm going to point out here are by unanimous vote of our committee. The second resolve clause, the language that should be removed, and I'll so move at this point since I'm the last speaker, is that in the second resolve clause, what is deleted is Article 4, Section 45 of the Charter of the Town, and inserted in its place is the language, Section 217 of the town code. And also, the language directly below that, Article 4 Flood and Erosion Control Board, refers to the charter, so that should be removed as well. And then Mr. Wetmore pointed out that there are two words that are in brackets in 217A. The words "appointed" at the sentence that begins with "on April 1," and then in the next, the last sentence, the brackets should not be in there. Those words should not be deleted, so that it should read, "Appointed Members of the Board shall hold office until the balance of the Senate," and the last sentence would read, "Vacancies in the Appointed Membership." Finally, we noted that while the language referring to the Board in what is added to 217, at the beginning, the Board is capitalized, but then throughout, it is not capitalized. So we moved to amend, in paragraph F, the Board is capitalized, and in two places in paragraph G, it's capitalized, and the C in Chairman is capitalized, and then finally, the word "Board" is capitalized in sub-paragraph H. We then took a vote on the resolution as amended as to legal order. Our vote was 11 in favor, none opposed, with District 3 absent.
All right. Thank you. So you now have moved to amend item 13 as described.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Moderator, this is a question of the town.
Yes.
Would you like to amend it to 217A, and the authority to the Board to plan it, rather than the brackets, you know, please? Do you remember, please? Or change it? That's right. I did, we did make that amendment. I failed to note that. We deleted the capital M and made it small m, so it'll read "appointed members," small m.
All right. Further discussion on the motion to amend offered by our Land Use Committee. Everyone understands what is being proposed here. We can adopt motions to amend upon unanimous consent. Is there any objection to the proposed amendment? Hearing, none. That motion to amend is adopted upon unanimous consent. All right. Discussion on the amended item 13. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? And once again, I remind you, in order to adopt this, we must have an affirmative vote of at least 116 members. So will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number 13, and proceed to poll your delegation? This is amended item 13. I do have the result of the vote on item 11. Item 11 is the appointment of Thomas Zach to the Alarm Appeals Board. Those in favor, 175; opposed, 2; abstaining, 8. That item has carried. All right. The final agenda item now comes before us, item number 14. Mr. Laurie, are you here? There he is. Roger Laurie, District 7.
Item 14, as it was on the call, was declared not in legal order by the town attorney, so we have a substitute motion. May I state that now?
All right. Well, this, having come to us via the citizen petition route, let's just take care of it in accordance with our procedure. So you are presenting that on behalf of those who signed the petition. What, and when I say that, I'm referring to the resolution that appears on our call as item 14. I understand what, you know, we all understand about what is about to happen, but that is now being presented to us. And the procedure is, something is not before us until it is accepted by the moderator. And the moderator must rely on the opinion of the Law Department with respect to whether a resolution is in legal order. Mr. Fox has reviewed the proposed resolution and has given us his opinion that it is, in fact, not in legal order, and based on that, I cannot accept it. So that is now not before us. However, you are correct. There was sufficient notice to the public in the call that the RTM would discuss budget issues and limitation of next year's fiscal budget, and so it now would be in order for a substitute resolution to be presented. So who is, Mr., who is going to do that? Mr. Laurie, you're going to present that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay.
I will read the substitute resolution. Whereas the representative town meeting on October 25th, 2010, voted to approve a sense of the meeting resolution by a vote of 135 to 41 to 12, and whereas the sense of the meeting resolution resolved, among other things, to reduce the rate of increase in the town's operating spending and lessen the rate of the tax burden on town residents and businesses, resolved that it is the sense of the representative town meeting that the total of all line item appropriations not exceed $344,236,076 for the 2011-2012 fiscal year.
All right. And that, is that being offered on behalf of the Legislative and Rules Committee?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it is. So it does not require a second, and it is now before us. Yes, Mr. Edwards, please.
Is this gentleman now?
Mr. Fox has given us his opinion that it is in legal order. Yes. All right. So may we have the committee reports on the substitute for item 14? Peter Berg, the Chairman of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening again. So this matter came before the Land Use Committee last Monday. Roger Laurie was with us and presented the item and clarified that this was not a District 7 initiative, but rather a petition of residents, but that, and that the goal, as the previous, consistent with the previous sense of the meeting resolution, is to slow the increase in town spending, not to cut it. And that the petitioners felt, feel that the BET, rather than the RTM, is better suited to decide what programs and line items to cut. With that, we had the three land use department heads with us, Diane Fox from Planning and Zoning, Denise Savageo from Conservation, and Michael Chambers from the Inland, Wetlands, and Watercourses Agency with us. And they reviewed responses that they had prepared to a recent directive that they had received from the First Selectmen to explain how they would achieve a goal of the petition. Diane Fox, well, each of them explained that cuts of the magnitude that were being, that would be required of their departments would have consequences. The public would not get such benefits as the recently negotiated accommodations around the 644 West Putnam Avenue development, which included that the developer is paying for signals, sidewalks, bus shelter. The Conservation Director mentioned a variety of programs that would likely be cut, including the goose control program. There would be delays in processing of applications, the work on the tree ordinance, the Byram Watershed Plan, the Open Space Plan, the Koskav Village Plan. And there was a discussion about the recently, the recent work on the Deerfield Lane application, which is a 14-lot subdivision, which was withdrawn, and therefore, the feeling was that that was only possible because of the ability of the Wetlands Director to engage an outside consultant. Many of the cuts involve reductions or elimination of consulting funds. So we felt it was appropriate to have had the land use department heads before the Land Use Committee. The, one final point is that the Wetlands, the Wetlands Director made a point of saying that his department, along with Planning and Zoning, generate revenues from fees from applicants, and that the Wetlands Department is virtually revenue-neutral due to the fees that are collected. Now, we didn't have a motion not to vote on this item, and that motion was approved by a voice vote.
Thank you. Before calling for the next report, I would like to report the vote on item 12, which was the appointment of Peter Levy to be an alternate member of Planning and Zoning Commission. Those in favor, 162; opposed, 15; abstaining, 9. That item has carried. I also have the result of the vote on the charter change regarding the Flood and Erosion Control Board, item 13. Those in favor, 184; opposed, 0; abstaining, 1. That item has carried. Mr. Brady with the report of the Education Committee.
Good evening once again. The Education Committee met at 8:00 PM last Monday in the Town Hall Meeting Room. All districts were represented. Call item 14, a petition from registered voters to limit the increase in the fiscal 12. Total amount to be financed to 1% of the fiscal 11. 12 total amount to be financed to 1% of the fiscal 11 amount of $340 million and change, was referred to the committee. The itemist proponents' contact person, Roger Laurie; Board of Ed Chairman, Steve Anderson; Board of Ed Superintendent, Dr. Sidney Freund; Greenwich Library Director, Carol Mahoney; and Greenwich, her deputy, Barbara Omerod-Glynn assisted. Parrot Library Director, Kevin McCarthy, was unable to attend, but emailed information regarding Parrot. Board of Ed members Nancy Cale, Mariana Pons-Cone, and Peter Scher, and PDA Council President, Sue Rogers, were also present. The committee had been informed that item 14 was not in legal order. However, in anticipation of a substitute resolution, took up the substance of the item and voted upon it as we understood it. The language he voted on is that the Education Committee supports limiting the total amount to be financed to $344,236,076, which is 101% of the fiscal 11's amount. The committee voted 1 in favor, 10 opposed, with 1 abstention on this substance of this resolution. The committee had received Mr. Walco's letter to department heads and the department heads' responses. The letter indicated that if the total amount to be financed were capped at $344 million, then appropriated operating costs would be limited to about 312 million, 312.2 million, a 13.2 million reduction of the amount recommended in the first selectman's, by the first selectman in his budget schedule on page 1 of the February 1 budget. The letter further allocated the $13 million reduction among the general fund department accounts. In this analysis, the fiscal 12 Board of Ed 600-line budget would be reduced approximately 5.6 million. The Greenwich Library 701 and 702 budgets, about 353,000, and the Parrot budget 710, about 63,000. Mr. Laurie stated that the purpose of the resolution is to limit spending and by extension, taxes. The proponents did not recommend specific reductions to the first selectman's fiscal 12 budget. Carol Mahoney stated that the library's business is increasing, and that the amount they requested is the minimum required to maintain services. She emphasized that the library has an independent board that has not reviewed her response to Mr. Walco's memo, but she said that if the library's budget were reduced by the suggested amount, library services would have to be substantially curtailed. She indicated that in all likelihood, one branch, either Byram or Koskow, would be closed, and the main branch would be closed on Sundays. Dr. Freund did not discuss specific cuts, which he would recommend if the education budget were reduced. He stated that a 5.6 million reduction in the, from the proposed fiscal 12 budget would be devastating. He indicated that since the department's expenses are about 85% payroll, headcount in both teaching and administrative positions would be substantially reduced. Cuts to non-special ed transportation would also be considered. In discussing personnel reductions, Mr. Anderson said that the GEA contract required that cuts generally be taken from among non-tenured faculty, those having less than four years longevity and lower pay, so that in effect, the number of people released would be disproportionate to the amount of the dollar reduction. The effect would be generally an older, more experienced faculty, but also one with larger class sizes. He said he did not know how any reduction would be allocated, excuse me, he said that any reduction would be allocated as determined by the Board of Education. Sue Rogers stated that PTA Council opposed the resolution and reminded us that Byram Library Branch also serves after-school programs. By email, Mr. McCarthy indicated that the allocated budget reduction would be, with that, with that reduction, the Parrot would be unable to fill its open youth services librarian position, and they would have to limit the Parrot's preschool programs. Committee members' comments on the resolution were basically that this was presented too late. It's simply not appropriate now at the end of the budget cycle. It's properly, should be addressed very early, probably in July and August, when the BET Budget Committee is beginning to gear up for the budget guidelines. That it should be brought up next budget cycle so that departments can deal with the service cuts that are specifically implied in here, and that those service cuts can be discussed. Despite the assertion that the resolution is based on last October sense of the meeting resolution, this resolution appears to be unconnected to it. Discussion between the BET and the RTM isn't necessary to identify the service reductions which the RTM wants to see, which would be necessary to achieve these budget cuts. Discussion should take place late summer or early fall to address the service levels. That this resolution, that the RTM should adopt this resolution, even though it's a non-binding sense of the meeting resolution. That was from the District One Representative, who was in favor of the resolution. Again, our vote was 1 in favor, 10 opposed, with 1 abstention for capping the total amount financed at $344 million. I would call to your attention that the resolution brought to us by the, the substitute resolution brought by Legislative and Rules addresses not total amount to be financed, but a different number composed with different things, which is the amount that we appropriate. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Von Keisling, you're standing, but didn't you already speak on this issue?
No.
You did not?
No. Just, it just seems that way.
Okay. I had your, I had your name crossed out here, so.
Could be.
Mr. Von Keisling.
It's Dr. Freund, not Freud. We did not meet on this. We do not deal with financial budgetary matters, so therefore, we have no opinion, except that we do deal with the town clerk's office that needs all the financial support it can get. Thank you.
Rick Crowell, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Public Works Committee met last Monday evening, joined us for the discussion. We're Ms. Amy Seabird, Commissioner of Public Works, Peter Tessie, our first selectman, Mr. Steve Walco, Chairman of the BET, and Mr. Tom Burns, our RTM Moderator. The Public Works Committee realized that the item on the call was not in legal order. However, prior to us taking up the item, we were joined by Mr. Walco and Mr. Burns, who had just left the Legislative and Rules Committee and were able to present us with a verbal representation of what the amended resolution would look like this evening. We decided to take the item up based on their input and discuss, if you will, the merits of the resolution. The PWC decided that the resolution was brought forth by a group of citizens that had very good intention and had a good initiative in trying to wrap their arms around the spending of the town and trying to look for ways to curb the spending. However, the resolution was far too broad, lacked specifics, and had no base, and was actually not real sound legislation. A point was made that it was just a sense of the meaning and not binding. But both Mr. Walco and Mr. Burns cautioned that a sense of the meaning is not something to be taken lightly, and that the RTM should use this tool efficiently, so that this and future SOMs would not be taken, or would be taken, I should say, with the utmost consideration. A further point was also made, that this task did not stop with the passage of this resolution. The RTM has the power to make cuts to all levels of spending in each of the op-codes that is presented, and is the final authority on the town's level of spending. The RTM has to take responsibility for these chores or lose credibility. The Public Works voted on this item 0, 10, 1, with District Three abstaining due to the fact that the delegate felt that she wanted to gather further information from her fellow delegates in District Seven to fully understand the reasoning behind the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Poseliotis with the Health and Human Services Report.
Well, on the outset, I have to tell you that I recused myself from the discussion since I did sign this petition. And the reason I am up here is because I have a very shy vice chair, Alexis Bulgaris, who asked me to present this. The HHS Committee considered whether or not to take up the Legislative and Rules amended version. A motion was made, and seconded to vote on whether we should take up the citizens' petition as amended by the Legislative and Rules Committee. A discussion followed. Most members felt that the areas overseen by our committee could not take the type of cut envisioned by the petition, and by discussing it, the committee felt that it would be giving the petition more credit than it deserves. A feeling was also expressed that it is not up to the RTM to micromanage the BET. One member did feel that a vote should be taken on the revised petition to allow a discussion by the committee, and then ultimately by the full RTM, as to the body's feeling on the matter. The committee voted on the citizens' petition as revised by the Legislative and Rules Committee by a vote of 1, 9, 0, with District One absent.
Thank you. William Drake, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee.
Good evening. The Budget Overview Committee discussed item 14 at our meeting on March 3, and although the item appeared not in proper legal form, we thought it'd be useful instead to discuss the substance, which is important. The discussion touched on several topics. It was noted that many costs are somewhat uncontrollable, particularly healthcare and energy and pension costs are difficult to manage. It was also noted that the timing of this item is late for this budget cycle and probably too early for the next cycle. And several members thought that the item lacked specific identification of spending One of the other points was that it was noted that one of the real strengths of Greenwich is low taxes and low debt, and that the financial advice, the best financial advice to give the budget appropriators would be the same advice that you give to your family, which is live within your means, you'll live a long, happy, and prosperous life. Our vote was 3 in favor, 8 against, with 1 abstention.
Thank you. Karen Sada Khan with the Parks and Recreation Committee Report.
Briefly, we felt we lacked clarification on the item. It wasn't clear what was going to be presented this evening. We saw the original was not in legal order. We also discussed the original proposal was probably not practical, and we agreed not to vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Dillman with the Town Services Committee Report.
Good evening. On Tuesday night, we agreed that since it was ruled not in legal order, we would not take it up, but we did discuss the intent of the motion. We identified four main points. One, we would need to identify what services the residents wanted to diminish or cut before this would take effect. Two, asking others to do what the RTM has the power to do is cowardly. Three, the timing of this is too late. It should have been done a year ago. And four, since the contracts are the most driving cost, we would need to alter the way we approve contracts. And on that, we voted 1, 9, 1.
Thank you. Gordon Ennis, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Finance Committee met last Monday at 7:30 in Town Hall Lounge. All districts were represented. We were aware that item 14, as presented in the call, was not in legal order. Therefore, we took no vote on that item. There followed a discussion about whether or not the committee was willing to offer a substitute resolution. And we voted after a motion made and duly seconded that the committee would not offer a substitute resolution. Fundamentally, the vote on that was 1, 11, 0. District Seven supported the action of the committee to get involved. The problem was with most of the members that these general cuts are unproductive, and they have unintended consequences. If we're going to reduce items in the budget, they need to be targeted, they need to be specific, and they need to fit into the overall operating idea and concept of the planning We were fortunate to have, at the meeting, several members of town government. Mr. Tessie rose and spoke briefly, and I'll summarize some of his comments that struck me as memorable. One is that a sense of the meeting resolution, to make general across-the-board cuts in the budget, is not really leadership. The SOMR, as it's presented, even the substitute, is an expression of intent, but it doesn't get to the heart of the matter. There are several initiatives underway in Town Hall, as Mr. Tessie spoke about, that will have some bearing on developments in town spending. One is very important. It's the ability to have fluid work assignments among the departments, so that the town can better respond to peak periods of activity. If we can make that work, that would be a very good thing. Secondly, the feasibility of combining the IT functions in the town, the Board of Ed, and the libraries. Probably not practical. At least, my experience with IT functions is they never combine, they only get bigger. And finally, we can make cuts in the departments. If we can achieve those spending reductions through collective bargaining, we can just cut departmental budgets. So we had a long Q and A period with Mr. Tessie, and I think the committee was appreciative. I want to summarize a little bit. The committee was, had received and was aware of the responses from the departments to Mr. Walco's letter. And I believe I can say that most of the members of the committee felt that those responses were disappointing. The comments by the departments really can be characterized, I suppose, as very adequate, but not helpful. Thank you very much.
Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, we took this item up last Monday evening. Appearing in our committee was Steve Walco of the BET, and RTM member Roger Laurie, who was one of the signatories of the petition that brought this matter before the RTM. Mr. Walco explained that in response to this item, he had contacted the department heads and asked each to provide for a list of cuts in the event that this sense of the meeting resolution had to be honored. He also believes that this resolution would require the BET to stray away from a longstanding tradition as outlined by our charter, whereby the BET presents its line item allocations and the department expenditures to the RTM, and we make the cuts, the RTM makes the cuts where it deems appropriate. He believes that this might set a dangerous precedent for how we run our budgets in the future. He also said that he believes the BET has complied as best it could with the October 25, 2010 sense of the meeting resolution, which is in the whereas clause of this item. And we asked Mr. Laurie to explain some of the terminology that the Law Department had troubles with, most notably, the total amount to be financed, what that meant. He said he was not the drafter of the petition, so couldn't respond to it. Mr. Laurie did say that the intention of the petitioners was to ask the BET to take a hard look at the budget, because he was unsure that the RTM had the, the information available to him, to us as a body, to make knowledgeable cuts to the, to the BET's presentation to the RTM. Our committee then knew that we had a resolution that was not in legal order. Two members of our committee didn't think that we should touch it, that if it wasn't in legal order, we shouldn't address it. The majority of our committee felt that just because the petition was inartfully drafted, we shouldn't kick it to the curb, because these are citizens who are making a petition to the RTM, and so we should do our best to bring the matter to the RTM in a form that makes it in legal order. So we adopted the language by a vote of 9 in favor and 2 opposed, which is the language that Mr. Laurie read with respect to the resolution, which essentially takes the number that was in the original resolution and adds 1% to it, because that was the intention of their resolution, was to add 1% to last year's number. The only additional thing that I would point out that our committee noted was that the exercise that Mr. Walco had the department heads perform perhaps can allow the RTM, if it wants to make cuts, to look at what the department it wants to make cuts, to look at what the department says should be the places where cuts should be made, if they have to be made. It may provide a roadmap for those in the RTM that may want to make further cuts when the budget comes to us in May. We voted on the item as amended. As I said, the vote as to legal order was 11, 0. We took the item up on the merits. Our vote was 2 in favor, 9 opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Settlemeyer, Secretary of our Transportation Committee.
The Chair of, and Vice Chair of the Transportation Committee were out of town last week when we met. As Secretary, I served as Acting Chair. The Transportation Committee reviewed item 14 on Tuesday, March 8. Several committee members reported that the Law Department had found the petition to not be in legal order. It was also reported that Legislative and Rules was reworking the language of the resolution and would present item 14 in a form of substitute resolution. We therefore also, we also benefited from the departmental memo that was previously referred to. The Transportation Committee agreed we would review and vote on the general policy recommended set forth in the petition. The vote on the policy recommendation was 4 in favor, 6 against, with District 1 abstaining. District 5 was not represented. Reasons for those voting yes, a desire to support the message in the resolution, a desire to confirm that there should be more controls over expenditures, and a belief that a 1% increase was better than a freeze. Reasons expressed for voting no, the sentiment was okay, but the resolution not realistic. The BET and the first selectmen are working to control costs and meet community needs. The message has already been expressed by the RTM, and the timing of the Sense of the Meeting Resolution complicates the current budget process. As a side note, I would just like to observe that one member suggested that Sense of the Meeting Resolution be presented at one RTM meeting and approved as to legal order, and then voted on at a second meeting. Sense of the Meeting Resolution should not be perceived as something that we rushed through. The comment was endorsed informally by the committee members represented. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crowell with a clarification, an earlier report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think I'm going to ask my new best friend, Mr. Wells, to help me with some of my committee reports in the future. I did make an error in reporting the vote. The vote was 0, 10, 1, with District 3 absent, and it was District 7 that had abstained on the vote, in order to get more information from the fellow delegates in District 7 to fully understand the reasoning behind the resolution. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. All right, discussion on item 14. Are you sure, Mr. Brutel?
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, we look back earlier this evening. We know what happens previously can sometimes be misinterpreted. Anyone who knows how to count votes know that this item is not going to pass tonight, but I did want to make just one or two quick comments before we dispose of it. The BET listens to us, but we also need to listen to the BET. Their chairman stood here in September when we had our previous motion and said to us at that time, "If you want to make cuts, make specific proposals." This does not do that. I'd point out, at the Budget Committee of the BET last week, there were only two other RTM members present. I sat through most of the morning. Get involved in the process. We've got two more months. The budget process is not done yet for this year. The budget has come out of the Budget Committee, it goes to the full BET, they have their reinstatement day after that, and then it comes to us in May. So we're not done yet. But because unanimously voting this down could somehow be interpreted by some at a later date, whether it be for a capital project or elsewise, I would not recommend voting this down. Instead, I would make the motion, Mr. Moderator, to postpone this item indefinitely.
Sir, a second.
Second.
All right. The motion to postpone indefinitely is now before us. That is a motion effectively to kill the item. It does have the effect of reversing yays and nays. If you are in favor of the item, you would then vote no on the motion to postpone indefinitely. All right, discussion on Mr. Brutel's motion to postpone indefinitely. All right, it being, well, I think I have to call for a record vote on this. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Brutel, motion to postpone item 14, substitute resolution on item 14 indefinitely. And please understand, if you want to continue discussing this tonight, you should vote no on this vote. If you want to kill this and send it away, you should vote yes. And that being the final, well, this is the final item on our agenda, so we will need to await the result of this vote before proceeding further. So I ask our district chairs to please expedite the conduct of the vote. I also, while we're voting, let me remind our committee and district officers that there will be a moderators' committee meeting on Wednesday, two nights from tonight. That will be at 8 o'clock in the Cone Room at Town Hall, and the first item will be discussion with the Chair of the BET regarding Nathaniel Witherell, which is a major project that needs to be dealt with. I have the result of the vote on the substitute resolution on item 14, Sense of the Meeting Resolution regarding next year's budget. Actually, this is on the motion to postpone that indefinitely. Those in favor, 148; opposed, 27; abstaining, 0. The motion to postpone indefinitely has carried. That disposes of item 14. There being no further business to come before the meeting, an absent objection, the meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming, and have a safe trip home.